You didn't call.
He didn't. He was busy with work today, but calling me, calling me, so I just sent him a more important conversation.
Oh, you got a top word cast up there tonight, huh?
Okay.
All right.
That's correct. Um, we have our board, so it's. My agenda. All right, it is now six thirty one P M. Today is Monday, November ninth. We are in the setting of our triumph for this regular meeting to see how some W B C A before we begin from stand up. I continue to review the due to the law of the United States of America and to recover before it is discussed. One nation under one individual who would agree to just crawl. Okay. Starting with item number one, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearings held at October nineteenth, twenty twenty. I will make you counsel on the way second by councilman. Questions on the minutes? Hearing them all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, item two, I want you to adjourn margin to approve the next of the regular meeting held October nineteenth, twenty twenty. So thank you, Councilwoman White.
Second.
And second by councilmember Beal, questions on these minutes or this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And extensions, question carries. Are you free? I want you to adjourn motion to approve the mayor's reappointment of Patricia Fairchild as a regular member of the Parks and Recreation Commission for a five-year term, expiring December one, twenty twenty five. I'll move it. Exciting, no worries. Second by councilwoman, I await your questions on this motion. How many years has she gone to a casting?
She and I graduated together, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, she just had a big birthday.
Yes.
Two weeks ago, yeah. Yeah, I know, we were just joking with it that she's been there for fifty years. She is incredible. She is awesome. Uh, if there are no questions, um, I'll call the motion on my favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And for a large Indiana in motion to consider business by the ordinance subcommittee?
Move it.
Thank you, Senator, for being on second by councilwoman LeWet. Um, and is there a report from the committee?
Yeah, um, we've discussed it with, um, city attorney Vivek and think we should get a better resolve of the ordinance if we're going to bring it, start bringing it forward with a written ordinance of, uh, how we want to go forward with it. We ran the derby one, um, and understand that it just got a little backed up by the moment the Torrenton area health issue, uh, because some of them into it more and find out why that part of the ordinance, when they were taking care of it, why did it get stopped and thrown out? And hopefully we can have something for next week. We're going to discuss again, maybe get something in writing, uh, more of a Torrenton ordinance, um, just depicting Torrenton, the ordinance itself. And we're discussing, you know, is, you know, what's the inclination of having a decimal level in as a prerogative for the ordinance or is it needed? Or is it more of an ordinance put together where it can be enforceable? Well, we'd like to have the chief put in his two cents into it also, uh, for next week also. So maybe Vic can contact with it and get a draft document up and maybe have the chief come to our meeting or, um, call in next Monday. Let's see if he can go over it. It's just feeling that.
Yeah.
Next Monday.
Yeah, this was, um, that, uh, meeting because of the election.
Unless you think it's too close, but if you want more time, I can give you.
I think it might be wise to just put on.
Okay, we can push it off till December, that'd be fine.
I think you're good.
Yeah, and you've got holidaying in the week as well.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that would give you more time. We were, we're talking enough. It was a week would be too close. So we'll push it off till December and then hopefully by that time we have stuff together, first of all.
Good. December seventh.
Okay.
Yes, December first, May.
Okay. Any other ordinance matters, um, that you're considering?
Nothing else.
Um, so I had a motion and seconded, um, I was waiting to see if there was a sub motion, so just to wrap this one up. Um, can I just call the motion all in favor of proceeding the report? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for the. All right, I'm fine. Um, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Blue House Group for the scope of services and fee schedule outlined in phases one through three of the proposal which was in your package. Um, and I know Rista is, um, calling in. Oh, no, I see her. She's also zooming in. Um, do I have a motion for discussion purposes at this?
I'll move it.
Thanks for the white section of the panel for me now. All right, so, um, Rista, do you want to talk a little bit about, um, what we're trying to accomplish by, um, bringing in these kinds of resources?
Sure. So a few months ago, we were talking about ways that we can activate our downtown, you know, before COVID even started, we were talking about how can we bring people downtown and then that kind of discussion kind of stopped because of social distancing, but I think that there are ways, uh, that this can still be accomplished to support our businesses in a socially distant way, um, complying with COVID. And so one of the things that we were looking at was a pop-up ping pong, uh, tournament or, or place. And we reached out to, um, Connecticut Main Street and they recommended Blue House Group and his, the gentleman's name is Tim Moore. And he really, um, started the pop, which is a ping pong, um, area or place in Hartford on Pratt Street. And just did a temporary pop-up, activated the space and started to see a lot of action and it became a permanent, um, business that he has there now. And he, um, has came and met with us in Torrenton to talk about different pop-up opportunities or ways that we can activate some of our vacant or underutilized spaces, um, to support our businesses and bring life to our downtown. Um, Blue House Group is unique in a few different ways. Um, and he not only does he have, um, an economic development, uh, degree from the University of Oklahoma, but he's also a private developer and does the, um, activities himself. So he will run the activities and, um, and schedule them and promote them and the whole works. So he's really a one-stop type shop and I, I think if you look through the, um, proposal that he submitted, it's very, um, specific to Torrenton, um, but he does have a lot of success in other areas and some really great ideas to bring us right through the winter, um, and, and again, using, you know, those social distancing tools, I think, um, he had some really wonderful ideas with that too. And he does it all. So he, you know, has already started to talk to some businesses because he thinks Torrenton downtown is great. Um, so he can do some of that private development as well as activating some of the, the vacant spaces for the city. Um, then he also runs them. So it's not a situation where he's going to give us a report and walk away. He's going to give us a report. We're going to work closely together through this whole process. Um, and, and I think that's what downtown needs right now. I think we need to make sure people stay used to coming downtown, stay used to walking around, um, visiting our, our restaurants, whether it's takeout or, you know, at their fifty percent capacity and still be in downtown, still supporting our businesses. And this is really what we need, um, just to keep our momentum moving forward right now.
Thank you, Rista. So I'm just going to conduct to know, um, some of the things that, that she just talked about. Um, what we're finding, um, in our downtown is especially since COVID and in having conversations with um, our, um, stakeholders, you know, the, the organization, the entities and the agencies that's, um, that, I was getting the course for us is that it's, you know, there's no foot traffic. There's, there's virtually no foot traffic in the downtown area. So Rista and I were actually looking at this problem, um, a year ago when we were developing our Building Healthy Communities grant. Um, and we identified that it's necessary for us to find ways to activate the underutilized spaces, um, to, um, to help bring some different ideas to some of the businesses that currently exist that might be hanging on by a credit um, or to incentivize new businesses to look at these buildings and use spaces differently. Uh, I was invited to speak at the West Target Co-Working, um, hub uh, in February of this past year and I was sharing a story about how when I was in Chicago, I kept walking by this um, ping pong club, you know, and how it was packed. I mean, every time I walked by there, there was a group of people. Um, it wasn't a restaurant. It wasn't a bar. It was a ping pong club. People could bring in their alcohol. They could bring in their food. Um, so it was supporting the neighbor businesses in doing so. So I was sharing the information, um, Pat McNeam, uh, Main Street, Connecticut, shared a name started about pop in Hartford. This is on Pratt Street where they did exactly that. They worked in an underutilized storefronts and said, what can we do to activate this to help identify a different kind of use that doesn't necessarily fit a restaurant or retail? Um, but that will generate that, um, foot traffic that we're looking for in Main Street. So, um, fast forward to, um, uh, maybe about four weeks, six weeks ago, Rista invited, um, Tim out to twenty twenty to, um, meet with us. Um, this, by the way, is being funded through the Building Healthy Communities Fund, which is the grant we, we received last December. And, uh, I think our meeting was at eleven o'clock in the morning, maybe twelve. He showed up at eight in the morning. He brought his bike here. He rode his bike all the way through downtown Prospect Street, High Street, um, Wall Street, stopped in almost every small business just to get a flavor for, you know, what's, what's at length downtown. He took, I think he said easily a hundred photographs of these great places that he felt could be activated. And he was just spitballing ideas as to how to activate those spaces at low cost for no cost. Um, of course Franklin Plaza was, you know, a highlight of his visit, um, as was the, um, Badger Brewery. Um, so we know that this is something that especially now with COVID and we're rolling back to phase two point one, that we need to think about how, um, how to bring some more excitement downtown and get people to come back downtown, um, as we reopen. So again, to wrap it all up, this will be covered under the Building Healthy Communities Grant. Um, he is unique in that, uh, we have never had a developer slash, I don't even want to call him a marketing agent, you know, but a, a program activator, um, in the city. So we think this, this is a great opportunity for us to kick off the new year with this very bright, um, energetic, um, young man and his group. So before it's over for questions. Um, I studied this yesterday quite literally and I shared it with, um, with Steve Temkin as a matter of fact. And at first, you know, it sounds, and I, I, the presentation was awesome. I think it very well done. I'm very impressed with what you said because I was not aware of that part of this. Um, and I understand that it will be covered by the grant, which is, which is part of it acceptable. I keep thinking that we do call, you know, consulting groups. And this is where I was coming from after reading the Blue House presentation yesterday and not knowing about, um, your additional information. Because we've had Good Earth working with us for quite a long time. They've done so much data collection on Torrenton Trails and Franklin Plaza and Midgen and, um, so many areas. They've talked to Steve Temkin. They've got so much data collected already that should be available for, to help with something like that. Um, I also then was thinking about the, um, wonderful group that you pulled together to work on the grant proposal several years ago. And, um, as an inviting guest sat in on a couple of those meetings and heard so many wonderful ideas and suggestions from business people and representatives from the, the banking industry and education. And when I was comparing that with the presentation from Blue House, I was thinking we have all this data with Good Earth already. We have this group of people that I think you put form in the next phase three work to create an organization. I think the organization is there and untapped. I think we could do that. Um, going with a grant makes it a little bit different for me because I was just prepared to vote no tonight. Um, I just think we have, we've done a whole lot of, of, um, research already and we need to look forward at like what he's thinking, at like what he's proposing it. But, um, you know, being involved, it's, it's hard for me because I've been involved in downtown and connected with Connecticut Main Street quite a bit up until a few years ago. So, um, I'm right now I'm in a, a bind wondering what it is I really want to do.
Would you like me to address some of that, Mayor, or did you want to?
Yes, ma'am, please.
So, uh, Sharon, I, I agree with you that there is a place for Connecticut Main Street and we have talked to um, our Main Street Downtown group and they just don't have the capacity right now. Um, you know, we've been looking at different ways to help them to try to build their capacity, but I do think that this is a little bit different. Um, where a Main Street group is really going to promote the downtown, um, you know, as a, as one and do some marketing efforts. This is, this is different in the fact that he's actually going to go out there and set up pop-up events and market the events and bring people downtown. He's looking at ways, um, through an economic development lens to triangulate the different areas and bring people, bring, um, downtown more, um, look at it as one place. So people come down for multiple reasons, not just one event. And how he can triangulate the different things that we have going on. But he is also, um, a real estate developer. And so as he's doing this, he's reaching out to different developers that he's, you know, he knows to come and look at these vacant spaces for them to activate them as well. He's working with businesses to work cooperatively, cooperatively with the things that he's doing. So I see this not in place of the downtown group or not in place of the work that has been done, but that really complimentary to all of those things where he is, you know, he can do the plan, which, um, is different because then he's also helping implement that plan. Um, it's, it's through a different lens than, you know, um, Val from Good Earth Advisors would, or some of the other, the groups that we've had. He's looking at ways, you know, like for example, one of the things that he did was he drove, you know, rode his bike through. He looked at all the different alleyways. And he's like, Torrenton has the greatest spaces and if we could bring some life and some color into some of these small spaces, there, there are little secrets that people want to come down, down and find. And how do we work, um, with these property owners to make these, these secret places cool and attractive and, and unique. And that is just exactly, uh, what we need downtown right now. A lot of little things, not one big event. Um, and I think that it will help, uh, bring our businesses together and hopefully complement the work that, um, the downtown Main Street group is trying to do.
Right. And I didn't mean to, um, to put that on the, you know, Torrenton Main Street because I know, um, that group has changed over the past few years and so they don't have that capacity. I was just looking back in his phase three for this, where it said, create an organization. And I just, I wasn't connecting that with Main Street because, but I was connecting it to that core group of people who, um, were at the grant when we were doing the grant. The people who were selected there, they had so many wonderful ideas, you know, the ways to bring millennials into town and to boost our downtown and our community. So that was where I was going. I wasn't trying to put this on the main street, Carol. I was just thinking we had, we had resources already in hand. So that.
Like you're, you're speaking of the working cities, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So very different, extremely different. Um, this is, um, the type of, of resource that's going to help develop um, a, um, more than a, um, more than a, um, help me, the Main Street, the Main Street, uh, the, the street Carol we have. This is something that he's going to help us identify what are those spaces that can be activated for, you know, uh, four months, six months, eight months.
Right.
Then parlay into, um.
What I meant, what I was, was saying was that until you presented tonight and gave more background in what Rista said about him, which I seriously appreciate because we need that type of motivation and I agree with that. But when I was only at this yesterday, I didn't know where the funding was coming from. I was looking at, trying to read through it because of my own experience with working with Main Street and working with economic development. And, and I talked to Steve a little bit too, because I'm always trying to motivate him a little. Um, and, um, so I appreciate you planning it better. And I would be interested in hearing what Paul has something to say as well.
Well, I have a comment if you are, or just a question to Rista. So, um, right now in phase one and phase two, it's eight thousand dollars. Um, how much, actually, I mean, it's no match for the city, so this is all awarded, awarded through his grant. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Three.
And then we think that we could, I mean, we, we have enough money in the Building Healthier Communities Grant to, um, complete it through phase three. We don't have exact dollar amounts on that, just because as we get through phase one, um, we, we really don't, we want to, we want to just be able to have a more detailed plan before we start putting cost figures to it. And there's a couple of different things that we can do, ways that we can go about it, um, different partnerships that we can make. So until we really know what other resources are offered to us and what our full plan is, we didn't want to put, um, dollar amounts at phase two or phase three, but we do, um, you know, this is through our, um, economic gardening, it's a part of our Building Healthier Communities Grant, which was the largest portion, the largest funded portion. So I do think that we will be able to fund, um, what, what we need to, to, to make this happen, not just the phase one.
And if I can.
Any, any money's requested from the city for a project?
None.
None.
All right. Okay. So if I can, um, part of that, um, what we expect after phase one and two will be additional recommendations. For instance, um, the, you know, uh, Wi-Fi connections in the downtown. And part of the, um, uh, presentation material, you would see that he had the, the wide districts, um, Pratt wide districts. So part of this is also going to feed back things that Val, Pharaoh, with Good Earth, um, and the people that participated in, um, our Working Cities Challenge were touching on, you know, he's going to identify, you know, based on these small businesses in this concentrated area, you may have, you know, a great Wi-Fi opportunity, um, you may have hotspot opportunities. And those are the additional, um, I, I want to call that an infrastructure recommendations that will come, um, through all of this research, I guess. And I also, but he's a really, I mean, I.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds incredible. And, and Rista and I, with economic bowling yourself, the regional economic development and looking at the expansion of broadband within the area that can help us with Wi-Fi hotspots as well, I'm sure.
I think the, the other thing that, you know, we, we've talked a lot about Blue House and Tim because he was just so impressive and I really what he, when he met with us, I was very impressed with him. I think he will do great. But if you look at some of the, the paperwork that he sent to us, he also has some strategic partners that are also really in line with what we're trying to do. Um, you know, this Matt Conway Rise Up For The Arts that is really all about, um, art murals and, uh, public art and art galleries and working with different artists, which is, you know, our downtown. Um, David Baumann, who is, um, is really looking at retail and mixed use, which is again, our downtown. We know we're having a lot of retail demand and that mixed use on the first floors, um, the, the, like the mayor was just saying, the free Wi-Fi USA. So he already has these connections with these, um, very impressive leaders in their industry and he brings all of that uh, to the table when he comes and looks at Torrenton. And the thing that, you know, that I just, you know, keep going back to is they are the people that are actually doing the work. So when they create the plan, they look at it through that experience. What does it take? They know what it takes to make these projects work. They know what it takes to make them successful. And so they're not creating plans that can't be implemented or plans that, um, are out of the resources that we have. They, they know what it takes and that's why they're developing a plan that can be, uh, directly implemented. And, and it's, it's the right team, I feel, for the, for the job that we need to do downtown.
I thought it was a very impressive presentation. Seriously, I read it from beginning to end and I liked the inclusion of the arts in the downtown area. I just, my biggest concern was on financing and, um, I just know that we're so tight right now with COVID. This is an issue and trying to keep our businesses afloat is, has been, um, you know, an ongoing task. So that was my main concern was that financing. But, and then also I was saying just about the resources that we already had between Good Earth and between the Working Cities group that, um, even if that isn't the group that we would need, there are people on that group that I think would fit into his main street when he's looking at an organization that is made of people who have the city as their primary concern. And I'm hoping. Thank you. Other questions?
Uh, Mary, do. Hello?
Yes, yeah, you can hear me.
Okay. Um, one, the deliverables here, this, this first phase, when do they expect for eight thousand dollars? When are they going to, um, present this to the city?
So, Rista, do you want to?
Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to remember what he, um, it was a fairly short turnaround. I think we were talking two months because we were looking for winter activation. So it was, I think between, you know, six and eight weeks is very short, but we were also talking about, um, in while we were starting that to do a pop-up, you know, to kind of see how it works, um, in one of our, one of the storefronts. Um, just to kind of, um, get something up and running while we're doing the, the plan, the phase one.
The money for the pop-up comes from the grant, the eight thousand?
Yes. Yeah, it will either be, um, private investment. He'll either decide to do it as his own private, um, his own investment, or if it does become a city, uh, sponsored thing, it would be through the grant.
Okay. And what's the total grant amount? How much would we, how much is there available to go through the three phases here?
Um, so the, the total grant award was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of that, two hundred and fifty thousand was put in towards economic development. I see this being just a small percentage of the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. Um, uh, going forward, if, if, if we prove this going forward, can we get an, I would like to see everything spent on, how do this money for this project? To know what's left so that we can. Okay, I mean, it's a lot of nice pictures. I mean, the guy writes well. It's great. I, I assume he's, where has he, where has he done in, where has he done this before in this, in this three-phase approach? What other, um, you know, um, cities has he done this for?
Uh, well, so Hartford. So Hartford, so Hartford is, um, where his, his track record is, I think he's gone through all three phases. Meriden, he has done phase one and part of phase two, but then, um, it kind of got, it never got any further because there wasn't support within the, within City Hall. But if you look at Meriden's plan, um, I, I mean, it's pretty impressive.
What's, what, what exactly is impressive, Rista?
Well, I think that his views are impressive. I think the way that he looks at space and looks at how it can bring people together is very, um, is very good. It's, it's different. He looks, you know, I've been walking around to downtown Torrenton for, you know, almost my whole life and I never looked at the alleyways and said, these are the most amazing places. Let's, let's make them activated. So I just think that unique look that he has from the development standpoint and the economic development standpoint, um, is, I'm looking forward to working with him and what he can see for downtown Torrenton.
So I'm going to find my call, um, in his presentation, uh, the pages where he shows the terminal square in Meriden. Um, one of the reasons, um, he was so excited about what we have done here in downtown Torrenton is, um, that photograph almost looks like our Franklin Plaza.
is that photograph almost looks like our Franklin Plaza. So when he's sitting at the Good Company Coffee House and looking down the plaza and sees essentially the investment that the city's made to create this destination, he then says, now you've done the investment, now we have to activate the space. And he helps identify those ways to activate the space. Sometimes it's a six or an eight-week program. Social House is a perfect example. He reached out to the owner of Social House, which is Chris Kelsey, and said that he wanted Chris Kelsey to hold out because he knew that he was looking to sell the business because he was hoping that that would be one of the first places that he could partner and activate the space. So what he's doing is he's bringing real ideas at low or no cost. Perfect example, I'm gonna stay on the ping pong table club idea. So when I came back from Chicago, I reached out to our Parks and Rec Commissioner, or Director, because I knew that I had signed a purchase order for three ping pong tables for a winter tournament. And I said, hey, Brett, what if we were to partner with Chris Kelsey at Social House and send those ping pong tables over to Social House? And he pops up a Tuesday night ping pong event right there in his bar. And he can charge a modest amount of money. We wouldn't charge him for the use of the ping pong tables. And it's just another reason for somebody to come downtown on a Tuesday evening. We put it all together. It was going to start in March and the virus hits, you know, COVID happened. So that peeled away. But those are the kinds of ideas that, that Tim was bringing to us. And there are so many other, I, I can't even think of some of the things he was rattling off. So much of it, he was reluctant to share in a three-hour meeting with us. For obvious reasons, you know, that's how he makes his, his business. But I do think that this is one of those unique opportunities that he's not a parking wreck. He's not, he's not a programmer. He's, you know, part developer, part programmer, part visionary that can bring those ideas to the businesses directly and create the connections for them. And I agree with you, a report back, what exactly did you do? How much of a return did we get on our eight thousand dollar investment?
That's what, that's what I want to see. I, I'm very curious as to why, I would like an explanation of why Meriden didn't go forward with this plan. I mean, saying that City Hall didn't support it is, is not actually an advertisement for him.
A lot of change in their economic development office. Their economic development director at the time was leaving. They were ushering in a new administration. And not that their priorities were shifted, but I think this was one of those things that there's so much that Meriden was undergoing with the whole reconstruction of their green and the rail line that this was tabled. I don't know that it's necessarily completely getting the water for them, but it was tabled.
Yeah. Well, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, is a sizable chunk of change to be spending. And I just want to be clear that we have tight controls over that. Because I'm, again, I have no idea who this person is. You know, it's a nice presentation, nice pictures. All I know, if I'm kind of a developer, contractor, businessman, entrepreneur, slash hyphen, slash hyphen, slash hyphen, I've lived a long time, New York, Los Angeles, Boston, and back in Torrington. And I've been exposed to all kinds of pitches from all kinds of people. And the eight thousand dollars, you know, that's the taste. And it's the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I personally want to protect for the good of the city, to make sure that we don't get into a situation where we are investing in something that we don't have complete control over. And that ultimately ends up wasting a lot of developmental money. Personally, I, I will, I will support this, Mayor. But on, on, again, on the conditions that we get a, a report, hopefully within eight to 10 weeks, no more than, no more, personally me, no more than eight weeks out, I'd like to see the progress on this. Because very soon and quickly, we will be asked to vote on the second phase, which is money TBD, which scares the hell out of me, again, dealing with related situations and related environments. That seven, that extra seven hundred plus thousand dollars is very, very tempting. So having said that, what I would like to also see from this gentleman and his team or whomever he's working with, I would actually like to see, going into phase two, I would like to see a partnership with some kind of advisory committee that's not made up of all farts, like all of us sitting in on a Zoom meeting. But that is composed of, of students from, you know, seniors in high school, but also from, you know, our community colleges. You know, we want to develop a, a growing artistic relationship with you, Hartford. Get those, get those people to be the sounding boards for these ideas. Because ultimately, I've seen way too many, and I'll cut this short, but here's my last thought on this. Because it's, again, I, I've had lots of experience in, in sort of related things, is it's always, always, always ended up a failure. When older people try to present to a younger generation ideas of what is hip and what is cool and what is blah, 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 blah. And it's always worked out exactly the opposite and usually much more productive and effective when you grow from within, when you let, when you let the people you're trying to attract dictate the shape and form of the, of the experience. So I would like to see some advisory committee, I'd like to see him put some thought into that and really give these people some, some, some say into, into what this thing is. And not just sort of throw together another classical stakeholder meeting. You and I, Mayor, have been involved in so many stakeholder meetings, which have been also BS because those people selecting the stakeholders have preloaded the attendees to that. And, and it's not truly representative of what a cross-section of the population that you're trying to appeal to, the consumers of this vision are going to be. So that's my thought is, is I would like to see also some, our own young people having a direct input to the development of this idea and concept, okay? Again, I know it's very vague, but this is the first time I'm actually seeing this and getting my head around it. But I, to me, that's really important. So I'll support this eight thousand, but again, I just want to insist that we have tight controls over this going into phase two.
Absolutely. Now, but I just wanted to add for, for the reporters that may be on this call, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars will provide you, again, that budget. We shared it a year ago. Not all of that seven hundred and fifty thousand is being used for economic gardening. It's all been parsed out with various outcomes that are going to be directed at the end and will only spend if we know we're going to get to those outcomes. So, Rista, maybe that's another opportunity for us to prepare that update to the council, letting them know where we are. Of course, with a pandemic, a lot of the goals that we had in the first year have been very slow, but we are inching towards them. And this is a perfect example of just that inching. So I appreciate your, you reminding us, your gentle knowledge to remind us to bring back a full report on the seven fifty because it is a very large chunk of money. We certainly want to be responsible to, not only the council and the citizens in Torrington, but also to Hartford Healthcare, who set that, that fund up for us. Great, other questions? I'll be right back. So we have. Oh, get the motion. And then motion, and the hand is moving, okay. I have a request to move this if there are no other questions.
None, not for me.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, between that and us, thank you. And thank you, Rista.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, so item six, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council acting here and as a motion controller, ready to approve the final payments from the fund for ninety sanitary sewer capital improvements. We have Wright Pierce Engineers, six thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents. Salt and Marsh Industries, ninety-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Weston and Sampson Engineers for twenty thousand nine hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars respectively. Another motion, motion, thank you, Councilwoman Whitner.
Second.
And second, the councilwoman, you know. Are there questions on these? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any post? Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept corporate council's recommendation and authorize Mayor Person to seek to get section twelve dash one seven nine to release the means described in a attorney shell memo dated November ninth, twenty twenty. I will, thank you, Councilwoman Whitner. Second, and second, the councilwoman Whitner. Questions on the motion for the memo? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize tax refunds indicated in the list dated November ninth, twenty twenty.
So moved, Waldron.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. And I think I heard it, Councilwoman Whitner. Questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council here and acting as a DBCA to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize assuming use of refunds indicated in the list dated November ninth.
So moved, Waldron.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Second, and second, the councilwoman Whitner. Questions on the motion, everyone? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Some, thank you, Councilwoman Whitner. And second, the councilwoman Whitner, all in favor? I, I need my glasses. Um, I think I saw it, it's still on, anything this evening?
No, nothing today, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Carol Anderson, any of the city clerk's office?
Hi, Mayor. I just want to give a shout out to my office. I'm very proud of the job my elections team did over the past eight weeks. Our results balanced beautifully. Our numbers were spot on and our absentee ballots were absolutely perfect. Our rejection rate was eight tenths of one percent. And this was very much a team effort. We had our three staff members, five additional temporary workers and seven volunteers, including Boy Scouts even. They logged over five hundred man-hours just on absentee ballots alone. That doesn't include my hours, of course. And as you know, about a third of our votes were cast by absentee, which is more than five times the absentee ballots we did in two thousand sixteen. And so just a note for the future, we'll have to think about the additional manpower and resources that'll be needed if absentee ballots continue to be as popular as they have been this year. And that's all I wanted to say.
So I'll just add how, our city corps office and our emergency rooms were going into the election. We had two meetings with all the various departments that could be impacted. The police department was present, Chief Alderman, Captain Barone and Gonzalez, Chief Attabu was in attendance. We even brought in the representation of each of the town committees just so that everybody was on the same page as to what expectations were, how we're gonna do this through a pandemic. And as Carol pointed out, the massive amount of work that was necessary to lead up to the day of the election and leading into the evening of the election. So I, I, when you say you want to throw some light on the, on your team, I say a lot of lights were tremendously grateful. You did, you did a great job. Great leader to that team. Yep. I guess that's it. Anything from the parish council?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to move into item eleven, which is considering who's the mayor and who's the council. If I can, Councilwoman Whitner, second, the councilwoman Whitner, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Post to the screen, anything this evening, Councilman, come out?
I couldn't hear that, Mayor.
Do you have, how does the vote of the order, anything to add this evening?
No, nothing. I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Waldron?
Uh, yeah, quite a hectic week with the election. Also with high school sports, I'll just mention that all, all sports postseason events were canceled this week. So, you know, winter sports run being postponed. So the pandemic is having its effect. We're not sure where we're going, we'll find out in the next couple of days.
Thank you, Councilwoman Whitner. Oh, first of all, I want to make this up, I don't want to, so for all of the work that she does on the active city, I don't think people appreciate the extent to which she goes to organize economic development. And I just really appreciate her. And this year has been a really tough year for her and for all of our businesses and our residents because of COVID. So I just want to thank her and to yourself for all of your effort on that. Also, I appreciate that we'll get an update on the Building Healthier Communities Fund because I had totally forgotten about that when I was looking at this and worrying about budget. And I think that's all, but thank you. Sure. Okay, Councilwoman Whitner?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilwoman Whitner, you got a list?
Congratulations to the newly elected representatives in our community representing Torrington. Certainly to those candidates that actually put themselves forward, Chris Vaeus for his first election, you know, with only like two hundred votes. Congratulations to winners and people who would put themselves out. Also, congratulations to the Board of Ed for their work educating the community of the referendum for the school. And congratulations that passed, you know, I think the city has its work ahead of them or Board of Ed has their work, but it's something definitely voiced by our community that this was definitely a needed project. I want to congratulate Drake, had a great article in the Republican American on his news coaching track and field. And it was really a great article, Drake, congratulations.
Thank you.
Carol. Carol, thank you for your, your work. I didn't want to come close to you at all during this time with any questions, but now you really compare us to maybe other municipalities. You know, I feel very proud of Torrington and how they managed this very, very difficult election. And I hope it's not the norm to have this many absentee ballots. I thought it was really more of the reason people didn't want to know the polls is because of COVID and their risk of exposure. So I hope that future, when people will come out and physically vote, but thank you.
All right, so I'll just run this out before we go into our executive session. Just so that the council is aware, David Lehman, Commissioner of DECD, is coming out to spend a little time with Rista and myself. Our goal is to introduce him to some of the great things that have happened as a result of the grants that have been awarded to us with the Penrose Project, the cleanup of Franklin Street, the development of the Franklin Plaza, with the cleanup and assessment work that has been done at Stone Container and Handy, which resulted in the sale of that property to a manufacturer who's over there already starting to put together infrastructure that he needs to bring in his manufacturing equipment and create between one hundred and two hundred jobs, depending on how quickly he can get up and running. And of course, to remind him of the great work that our Five Points Center for Visual Arts is undertaking. So we will spend a few hours with Commissioner Lehman on Thursday morning. Thursday evening, we are doing the official ribbon cutting rededication of the plaza. So if any of the council members are available, at four thirty, we'll do the necessary kudos and accolades. And then I get to flip the switch for the Kennedy lighting, which was between the labyrinth, which I kept saying, I was gonna throw myself. Which was between the labyrinth, which I kept saying, I'm gonna throw myself in this for a war, and the cabinetry lighting. Um it's really um wonderful to, it's amazing, isn't it? I have strong hope that um between the Blue House and some of the property owners on that. We're gonna really see that place take off for the next year. Um I would also add that I did have a meeting with uh the superintendent. And Sue Lebowski and Ed Aaron this morning, uh with Dan Farley and Alice. Uh and bond counsel and bond advisor to start talking about those first steps. To make this um school construction project um move along quickly. They have an aggressive timeline. And we want to make sure that we're doing everything to um provide all those resources that they're going to need on a timely basis. Like keep that moving quickly. Um I I think if you didn't catch my quote in the newspaper. My hope of this referendum, when I did cast that time breaking vote, was first that there'd be enough time for the voting public to. Be able to be informed going into that um into that ballot question. I hoped that we would have um the largest um engagement of voters. We wanted to make sure that this wasn't a referendum that got passed by twelve hundred people, you know, with a one or two vote margin. So we wanted to engage the largest number of voters. And really I hoped that it was uh passed by a large enough margin. So then everybody was confident that this really was the will of the people. I do think this referendum did prove all of that. Um I appreciated um Mr. Aaron's comments in the paper this morning. Where he talks about now they have to work with um our economic development team. Because um the um impact on our budgets and mill rate going forward will be significant. So we have a lot of work ahead of ourselves and to Councilman Cavanero's point about that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We want to make sure that we get a return tenfold on that. Um so that we can cover the cost of this um school construction, so. Um I think that's about it for me, unless anyone has questions on what I presented. Oh, there is one more thing. The fun thing he did this weekend, so you know, when you get kind of inspired of meeting with people like Tim from Blue House. And he starts talking about um you almost have to show people how something can be done differently. Um so our Christmas committee has been meeting for the last two months. And this year, in light of the fact that we cannot do our traditional light up main with the. The flipping of the switch for the Christmas trees at Hope Park and years ago. Um we are pivoting to something that is more of a self-directed stroll. And our goal was to create a vintage window shopping experience. So um with the help of Carol and Jim Wright from Wright's Barn, Travis Lipinski, Jim Sharu. Um who have these great collections of um mid-century modern furniture. Um they pulled all of these pieces downtown Friday night and Saturday and Sunday. We spent the day filling up the window fronts on the east side of Main Street. Um that would be reminiscent of what Mertz Department Store would have looked like in the nineteen fifties during Christmas time.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's, it exceeded my expectations, um and I'm gonna just.
I was with Travis when we did the yarn crawl.
Yes, we had many vintage pieces in windows. So Paul, when you talk about those young people, you want to see us engaged, Travis Lipinski is one of those young people, he's thirty seven old. Um he has a business on Main Street, he owns two pieces of property in Torrington. Just, you know, one of those young people that you want to um just engage. And you know, let him loose on giving us some feedback. Just remarkable, a remarkable um bit of fun for that holiday. Christmas Village will be different this year as well. What we know is we can't have a thousand people standing in line waiting for Santa's visit. So um we are doing it this year with um. With reservations, we're using event breaks, um and families just have to go online. Schedule the day and the time they anticipate to be there by the hour. We know that the number of people that will be in, will be able to get into the village through the various cottages within that hour. So we never have more than fifty people at any given time within the complex. Which is important for the executive orders. It's tricky, it's doable.
Um it may be successful in the future.
I love the crowd.
I know, a crowd.
It's driving in line for three hours is part of the, you know, part of the charm. We um, yeah, we're just, uh just trying to think of uh other ways. Another, another added um self-directed um type of event is we are also going to be doing a story walk on Franklin. Um we will be displaying the um towards the night before Christmas um on um each, at each station. Some kids, families can just come down and Small Business Saturday, um they can do the walk. Read the pages of the book as they stroll down Franklin Street. And the event, there will be a DJ, so there'll be music and dancing whenever they're here, if they hang around tomorrow. Um and then work with Good Company. To um open up her um her small business so that the kids can have some refreshments, kids and parents. And reintroduce everybody to Franklin Plaza. I'm excited about the story walk, that's, that's.
Exactly, fun, the story walk is always fun.
Yeah, so um different this year, more self-directed. But um we're hoping that the unique experiences will bring families downtown.
And the letters are up, the toy shower.
Yes. Yeah, toy shower is also being done differently, doing more, encouraging people to go online. Make your donations, um working with the radio station. Um so uh more to come and I'll try to push that information, I'll write email. Because uh we have all of our plans sort of set. And then that latest executive order came out where the governor said, no, it's not a hundred people, it's only fifty people.
Yeah.
So we're, we're, it's a moving target for us. So with that said, I think we need to move into item twelve, and I'm thinking logistics. Um do we want to stay alive on this call and close this meeting to everybody? Or do we want to go into the other room and I can call them in?
Right now, do it.
Yeah. But we, we could, we could remove everyone else that's not Paul and Drake and do it in here.
And that means you have to hang in the hallway and wait for us. Why don't we do this? Since it's just Paul and Drake on the call, would you guys be okay if we just phone you in to the executive session in the anteroom, or?
Sure. Yeah, no problem.
Alright, and let's do that. So I need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to CGS section one dash two hundred. Subsection six, subsection B. And section one dash two hundred, subsection nine, subsection C, to discuss strategy and negotiations with respect to funding claims. And in that, we'd like to invite the corporation counsel, um, Michelle. And then councilman, secretary, my councilwoman Whitner, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Almost, okay. You're gonna, you're gonna close this meeting? There's no action coming out of this executive session, so if you want to close down the Zoom. Um I can just report back what time you want to take your session.